Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Ms. Whitby, you want to call the roll?
Yes, sir, Ross.
You've got to push them on and off, and only three can come on at one time. Is yours on? Mine's on, and two more. Red zone. If you see the top of it, if you see... All right, Alderman. City council members, one and one do not work. I'm telling you guys, we're tweaking everything. This is a brand-new facility. So, wait and call the roll, or we'll just speak up.
Okay, Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor will be absent. Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Gan?
Here.
And Hyde?
Present.
The board is present, sir.
Okay, let me just remind everybody that this is a brand-new system. We finished it probably about thirty minutes ago. The speakers, they're a lot different. We're going to have to be tweaking them. They're calibrating them tonight as we work, so those are issues. If the top of your mic is red, then that means you're live. Now, one issue that we have here is, we're getting a little bit of an echo, and there's a reason for that, that this comes out in a cone, and it's aimed, and it's bouncing off of the desk. So, this week, they're going to come and tweak it so that it's a little bit higher, so that the cone, if you will, is going to hit you about chest-high. Yeah, I don't think that'll matter, but we'll try that. Go ahead, Nathan, if you want to give us a brief...
Sure. So, right now, kind of the default figuration is three microphones on at a time. So, that keeps us from all talking at the same time, but it also keeps us from doing, like, the roll call like we usually do. So, we'll have to tweak that. Your microphone should be back, and as the mayor says, because right now, the cone that it's projecting out, if you pull it down, it's hitting straight at the back of your computer. If the light at the top is red, then you are hot. Yeah, your mic is hot, so...
But only three at one time?
For tonight, only three at one time. I'm sure that's a discussion we can have.
Okay. The other thing is, is that they're very sensitive. So, you can see how far back I am, and it's still picking me up. So, what I'm telling you is sidebar conversations can be hurt, okay? So, be very careful when you're doing that. Make sure your mic's off, okay? Does yours work, Charlie? Push the button there. Yeah, yours is on, Jane.
Is that off?
Red is on.
Jane's works. Red is on. Red's hot.
Turn it off.
Okay, turn them off.
Turn it off.
Ron, yours work?
Charlie. Turn it off.
All right, everybody's... Beth, are you the only one that doesn't work? Yours is working now? Okay. All right, we're good to go. All right. Nathan, anything else you want to explain? Well, we're live Facebook, we're live on Comcast. AT&amp;T fought it for the last four days, and all they're getting is our video and no audio, so it's not on AT&amp;T. But Comcast and Facebook is working tonight.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, anything else we need to talk about?
All new cameras, all new audio system, new broadcast equipment, new presentation system. We'll adjust the lighting over that. We don't need the lights on there anymore. But, yeah, we're still learning, so a lot of thanks to Scott Stanley.
We encourage anybody at home, if you see something that needs to be tweaked, to send us an email, and we'll... we want to listen to what you've got to say. So, with that, you guys in the control room can take option three off the screen if you want to. Okay, with that, I invite you to rise for the prayer and the pledge led by Council Member Hyde.
Let pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the glorious day in Arkansas today, and we thank you for your presence here tonight. We pray that you'll be with us as we make decisions for this city, be with all of our city employees, and all of our elected officials, our uniformed, our non-uniformed employees, watch over, guide, protect them, and all that they do. We pray for armed forces, whether they're overseas or here at home, protecting us, keeping us free. And we pray that everything that we do and say and think for in the coming days, months, weeks, and even year will be pleasing in your sight, and forgive us of our sins. In Jesus Christ's name I do pray. Amen.
Amen. Our prayers lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The move.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
And Hyde?
Yes. Thank you very much. Communications, we've got quite a lot. Does anybody want to pull any of them? Seeing none, I have a motion to accept communications.
Move to accept the files 1 through 10?
1 through 12.
12.
Yeah. And a second?
1 through 13.
All right, what... Is 13 the one on the...
Community development.
Community development?
Yes, sir.
Has everybody got a copy of number 13?
Yep.
So, that's so we can start the 30-day process on number 13.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to accept 1 through 13. Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gan?
Yes.
And Hyde? Yes. Thank you very much. We've got a couple of presentations this evening. First, I didn't see Sandy. Sandy, are you here, de Corsi? Is Sandy here? Presentation, the introduction of AmeriCorps teams. Okay, nobody from that group is here? Okay, I think, did I see DeShawn come in, Scarborough? Are you ready to make your presentation? Okay, come right, come up to the microphone. DeShawn Scarborough is the director of the Arkansas Martin Luther King Commission, and he wants to make a special presentation. DeShawn, floor's yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. May I ask Chief of Police or the captain to join me at the podium?
Assistant Chief Tracy Rosson's here.
Thank you so much. Hi, how are you? To the mayor, Honorable Joe Smith, city council members, citizens of North Little Rock, thank you for having me. I am grateful to the city of North Little Rock for the opportunity to the address to the city of council as the executive director of your Arkansas Martin Luther King Junior Commission. You know, we always receive a lot of support when we host our outreach programs right here in your city. And again, it's truly an honor to be here, once again, in the same city that hosted our 2018 Mega King Fest at North Little Rock High School. You know, I recently had a birthday, and the day before, a movie came out, The Avengers. In fact, I've heard people say, "That's the biggest movie and biggest thing in Avengers, Avengers Endgame." Without spoiling it for many of you, some of you Marvel fans that haven't seen it, there are some pretty big sacrifices. Some left the movie theater disappointed. Why sat there for three hours in the movie theater cheering for the good guys? Now, I tell you that because of the interests of people. It says a lot about our culture. We're drawn to superheroes, the good guys, the underdogs, the ones who come back and win at the end. And the stories of sacrifices made for the team. But there's another type of team. The team that dresses up in blue. They wear a shield that says, "We promise to keep you safe." A shield that says, "Nothing is going to happen to you on my watch." If we can get excited about The Avengers joining together to beat a bad guy called Thanos, we could surely come together to honor our police and first responders dressed in blue, wearing that same shield. They stand out in front lines every day. To serve in law enforcement is an act of service. Dr. King once believed that the road to greatness was paved through service. The question was asked, "Who shall be the greatest among you?" The answer was the person who serves. Now, Mayor, to commemorate Police Appreciation Week, the Arkansas Martin Luther King Junior Commission appreciates this opportunity to honor one of our very own commissioners, Officer Carmen Helton. Officer Carmen Helton is the recruiting coordinator for the North Little Rock Police Department. We honor her today for her work with youth. She's a mentor, and started the North Little Rock Police Department Youth Summer Camp in 2016. The camp has seen growth ever since. She consistently receives letters of appreciation from civilians. She has participated in over 1,700 hours of law enforcement training. She utilizes social media platforms to positively promote the city of North Little Rock. Now, the police department and the community interactions throughout her work. She started the Pink Patch Program in 2017 to join the department's support for breast cancer awareness, and she's a member of the Fraternal Order of Police. Now, in her spare time, not that she has any, she volunteers with the United Cerebral Policy, Special Olympics, and the Parent Teacher Council of Palassee County. Now, Dr. King has a sermon called "The Drum Major Instinct." The drum major is a leader who is selfless, dedicated, and always willing to help others discover their true purpose and calling. During this Police Appreciation Week, we, the Arkansas Martin Luther King Junior Commission, would like to take this opportunity to present an award to Officer Carmen Helton. Please give her a round of applause.
Thank you for all that you do. You're a wonderful example of what North Little Rock officers are all about. We appreciate you very much. You bet. Okay, let's move right into consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda? I will recognize the board members. Seeing none, how about a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, on the, to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I want to reach out and thank Council Member Baxter for serving on our Non-Uniform Retirement Board, Bob Fleckenstein agreeing to serve another term on civil service, as is Lillian Williams on civil service. So, those are great commissioners, and we do appreciate you very much.
And it's Lillian.
Oh, okay, Lillian.
Diane, back up over there so the camera can get you, so everybody on TV can see Lillian's pretty face.
What am I going to say? Okay. I'm ready. I, Lillian Williams...
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm, both.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arkansas?
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arkansas?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the North Little Rock Civil Service Commission? Of the North Little Rock Civil Service Commission?
Upon which I am re-entering, exiting, entering, whatever. For a long time?
For a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lillian, for your service, past and future. Ms. Ross wants to recognize some very special young men.
In the audience tonight, we have its Boy Scout Troop 18 from First United Methodist Church on JFK, and they're working on their citizenship in the community merit badge. We've got, I know that we have troop leader Thomas Wilkins. I don't know who else is back there with you.
Yeah, you guys stand up. Let us see you.
Oh, wow, we've got a lot of... Anyway, really proud to have them here.
Absolutely. All you guys waving home, your moms and dads are watching you right now, so wave at them. Thank y'all for being such great servants of the Boy Scouts. Thank you. Okay, let's go in. We've got a lot of public comments on upcoming legislation. Might as well start here at the top. Jamesard, regarding our 1994 head-out. Jimmy?
You do know the speakers up there aren't working.
Okay, thanks for that, Snell.
When it comes time to vote for the council member a little raise, they deserve everything they get. They all do good work. They all care about the city, and I'd like to see y'all start providing them with a cellphone for about $25 a month, times eight, they can have a cellphone with everything they need. I don't think they should have to spend their own money on their own cellphone. So, I know they're going to vote for it, but I at least got my say.
Thank you, James. Okay, now, we've got several want to talk on oh, 1967. I just want to tell you on the front end that we're going to read that one time, and Council Member Harris is going to hold that legislation, so it'll give us another two or three weeks, or even a month, to discuss it and make sure everybody's comfortable with what the legislation is. But you're still welcome to talk tonight. So, James McLaughlin. James, are you here?
Yes.
Yeah, you want to come talk?
Yes.
Now, the other two, Michael and Bobby, if y'all, if Michael says something that you disagree with or agree with, or if you want to just say ditto, that's fine too. So, go ahead.
Yes, I'll make this kind of short. I'm here representing some of our neighborhood. I'm not speaking for everybody, but I'm here to tell the council that the majority of the neighborhood, a vast majority of the neighborhood opposes this change, this change from going from residential to commercial property. To tell you a little bit about our neighborhood, our neighborhood in North Little Rock is a neighborhood that is filled with, and most of them are here, our average people that live in our neighborhood is, or the average time span, is anywhere from 11 to 20, over 25 years. That means the majority of our neighborhood, those people have lived there for that long. It's like seven to nine years more than the average homeowners will stay in one property. I, myself, select to live in my neighborhood because I love it so much, I'd select to drive 40 minutes to work and 40 minutes from work because I love my neighborhood. Our neighborhood, we're very proud of our neighborhood. Our neighborhood has very low crime rate, and it's not because we have this awesome big force of crime-watch personnel, it's just because we all know each other. There's not a car that goes through our neighborhood that we don't recognize, that if there's a car there, or a truck, or anything that goes through our neighborhood without us recognizing us, two of us or three of us are out talking about it. We're always engaging with each other with, on the internet, and emails and stuff. This proposal to turn this into commercial property where everybody will, the only access they'll have, is coming through our neighborhood, that is going to just alleviate any kind of credibility that we have to watch who's coming and who's going. I'm just here speaking, and I'm asking that instead of turning it into commercial property, we're not opposed to developing the area, but we would love to develop it as homes and residential homes because we feel that it's a great neighborhood, it's a loving neighborhood, it's a good, tight community, and it's worth checking out. And we're just asking that, give us a chance, give the residents a chance to build it up, and let us bring more people in like the ones that already live in there. Like I said, we are living there, and you can go through our neighborhood, and most of us have lived there over 11 years. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thanks, James. Let me remind everybody, and I forgot to tell James that our public comments are limited to three minutes, and I think you hit it right on those. So, Michael, Lawson, Bobby Wilson, you want to add anything to that, which you're certainly
I'm Bobby Wilson, and I've been up there since 1994, and it's getting hard now with, just what was there already, it's hard to get out on, out of that area sometime. We have two churches, we have a school, we have a hospital, and a whole bunch of residents that live up there. You've got to come back to Crystal Hill Road to get out of there, and when, all this traffic is going, it's going to get worse with the business there. I don't know what kind of business it's going to be, but whatever it is, it's going to add to our traffic. And you have to come out on Crystal to get to Interstate 40 or Interstate 430. You've got to come out on Crystal Hill Road. Only one way in, one way out. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Michael, you okay? First, Michael. Come on.
I'll keep my presentation short, Mayor Smith and council members. I do have a few handouts. If I can go ahead and hand those out?
Absolutely. Just hand them right there to the city attorney.
Since this is going to be, I guess, tabled for future discussion, we'll discuss some of these items later, but basically, the handouts that they're passing around now, we have a petition with 32 signatures from property owners in the area that are against this rezoning request. As you know, it's already been before the Planning Commission. We had a unanimous decision from the Planning Commission, and they were against it. There's just, there's so many reasons why this is just a bad idea to have this property rezoned. The, this other sheet that I handed out that has the maps on it, one of the items that was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting was that it was not suitable for residential zoning. Highlighted in pink is the area, the property that they're wanting to rezone. The yellow line shows where the end of the commercial property is. Everything north of that is residential, everything south is commercial. And they said it was too close to the interstate. The following pages or five other sheets pulled off Palassee County website, properties that are just as close to the interstate in Pleasant Valley, Walnut Valley, Breckenridge, some really nice homes. So, I just dispute what is being said here, and we would like for the council to consider the facts that we place forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, John Flaster, fire marshal, 94, 5, and 8.
Good evening, John Flaster, Fire Marshal, North Little Rock, live at 301 West 7th in beautiful, historic Argenna. I want to talk about the contract and the raises that have been agreed on. The battalion chiefs have historically been included in the contract agreements. We were cut out of those this year. We were told that we did not receive the 3% because we were not represented. We've been trying 10 years, and for the past three years, trying really hard to be recognized as a bargaining association with no luck. We're the only uniformed personnel that do not have bargaining representation at this time. Local 35 represents the firefighters, the FOP represents PD, and the Supervisors Association represents PD sergeants and above. Currently, we have fire department captains that work overtime that make more than we We would like for you to look at this legislation tonight and include us back in a 3% raise and cut us out of the 2.5 and go with the 3%. One of our main reasons for this is the consideration that what's the incentive to study, do well, go to schools, get promoted to battalion chief to take on the extra responsibility when captains make more money than you do? So, this is all about the future of the fire department, not just for us here tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Phil, I see your name on here. Do you want to add to that? Phil Pounders.
Mayor, since you insisted, then, yes, I'll go ahead and add to it. I am Phil Pounders. I'm a battalion chief with the North Little Rock Fire Department. It's been my privilege to have worked for the North Little Rock Fire Department for over 34 years now. I have a few years left in me, hopefully, and my wife, at least, tells me that I do, and I can't retire yet. She's not quite ready for that. But when I began my career with the North Little Rock Fire Department, I started out at $14,370 for my annual salary. That was for a family of three that was just above the poverty line. My wife was a stay-at-home mom, so I worked an extra job just so that we could make ends meet. Over the years, I've worked my way up through the ranks to the rank of battalion chief. I oversee every firefighter, fire station, fire apparatus on my 24-hour shift. Since I've been a battalion chief, the city has given those of us that are my rank, battalion chief, the pay increases and benefits that were negotiated with the union, that is, up until this year. We simply, the battalion chiefs, simply had an unwritten gentleman's agreement with the city. We were happy with that. We were good with it. It worked well. But we've run into some roadblocks, it seems, and we, not only not receiving benefits, we actually, this year, had a day of vacation removed because we don't have our benefits and pay increases in writing. I think Chief Flaster referred to that a few minutes ago. Battalion chiefs, we work the same 24 hours on and 48 hours off as the other uniformed firefighters that we oversee. We live at the fire station away from our families for 24 hours, just like every other uniformed firefighter. We respond to fires and other emergency calls just like every other uniformed firefighter on our shift. So, all I'm asking tonight is something that's simple but very fair, and that's in the 3% increase, include the battalion chiefs with that. I believe there's an amendment that may be proposed tonight, and I would ask that you would strike battalion chiefs and fire marshal out of that amendment so that we are included in the 3%. And we can, and that's R94, I believe it is. And then, in the other amendment on the 2.5%, you can strike us out of that one. Or the third option is include us in both and give us a 5.5% pay increase, which we're okay with that. But at a minimum, just the 3%, please exclude us from that amendment and include us in the 3% increase. Thank you.
I normally don't make comments on comments, but I'll try to best I possibly can. I mean, I'll certainly sit down with you guys. You know, we get ourselves in trouble when you run a business or you run a city, and when I took office seven years ago, we had been doing for the last 30 years cross-board races. And when you do that, after a period of time, the higher paid employees, the difference between the pay gets completely out of round. We spent six years since I've been mayor getting the police department in line. We were able to get you guys at the fire department in line probably in year three. So, if we go in there and give the batt chiefs, or the highest employees, the same raise, then that variance continues to grow, and it's not good, a cruel message for us to send out there. You know, my goal, when I try to work on anybody's pay, is what's fair, you know? And, you know, sometimes unions won't fare plus, and I think I've told you guys, the batt chiefs, there's four of you guys, we have, we have three batt chiefs and one fire marshal that's considered a battalion chief. And, you know, my goal is to make sure y'all are paid fairly. And I have looked at comparisons of cities, our size, our budget, and if I'm not mistaken, we're probably more higher-paid than everybody but Little Rock. So, I think what you're getting paid is fair. You know, I'd like for y'all to do your research, and if a Jonesboro, or a Fayetteville, or a Springdale, or a Texarkana, if their batt chiefs are making more money than you guys, then I want to look at it and see that I'm not being fair, if that's the case. So, when we were working with the firefighters... So when we were working with the firefighters union, um, you know, we never considered, uh, doing that across-the-board to the higher-paid employees for that reason. It just, it doesn't make accounting sense. But I'd be more than happy to sit down with you. I noticed, Phil, on your email, that you were concerned about the other benefits, the longevity pay and all that stuff. You know, unless I'm wrong, all that goes to you guys. Only thing that's different is your salary increase. Uh, but I'd be more than happy, I want the legislation to go as written. Uh, I've been struggling with it for two or three years now, and if y'all think that we're being, being unfair to you, uh, then let's set a meeting up and let's sit down here in the next week or two and talk about it. Uh, we can always change it, you know? But I'm, I'm not comfortable in supporting that right now, 'cause I haven't had time to analyze the, the, the pay. I hadn't looked at what they make in Springdale or Fayetteville or wherever else. And, uh, so if you'll give me two or three weeks to look at all those things, then we can get together. But I'm not, I'm not for changing any legislation for tonight. Okay, next we've got, uh, Don Courier, uh, Dow Courier.
Dow.
Dow. Yeah. Oh, nineteen sixty-four.
Yes. Mayor, City Council? Uh, I am Dow Courier. And I have more questions and comments. It's, uh, first I've heard about, uh, any change in the area. I own a lot, ten, the Argenna Plaza Edition, and this is a conditional use for a parking lot in a C-six zone. And, uh, I really don't know anything about it. I hadn't seen a sketch of it or what's gonna be adjacent to it, or I really don't know anything other than this letter that I got, so.
Uh, if you'll wait till after the meeting, I'll be more than happy to talk to you. Our planning director is here. He can talk to you, uh, on a sidebar outside if you want to.
Okay.
Uh, but I don't wanna answer questions right now. This is a public comment, I'll leave it.
All right. Okay.
So Sean, Sean's over there. He's in the other room, so he'll probably walk over. If you wanna step outside with him, you can, or we can talk after it's over with.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Okay, um, all right, Joe Morris on the sign, uh, out at the church. Joe, we're gonna hold that legislation tonight, but if you wanna speak, you're welcome to. Is Joe out there? Joe, you wanna speak or wait? Okay. Um, okay, Lisa, oh, Lisa Farrell, oh, nineteen sixty-nine.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I just wanted to be, uh, know that I was here.
Okay. All right, good deal. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, let's go into new business.
Hey, R-1993, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of a memorandum of understanding between the City of North Little Rock and the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, Local Thirty-five.
How about a motion?
Second.
Is this the one we got amendment on? Which one do we amend?
Now, we have an amendment on this.
Okay. All right, got a motion and a second on R-1993. Any questions, comments on the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Oh, nineteen ninety-four, Mayor Smith.
R-1994.
Yes, uh, yes.
Uh, please call it.
A resolution amending resolution number ninety-five sixty-eight, the twenty-nineteen budget to amend, uh, fiscal year nineteen budget for a three percent pay increase to uniformed fire personnel of the City of North Little Rock. And you have an amendment on that one.
How about a motion?
Second.
Do a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. How about the amendment? Is it passed out?
It is passed out.
Okay, everybody see that? All right, who wants to sponsor the amendment? Okay. How about a second?
Second.
All right. Question?
Here's my question on this, and I think this is one of the things I understand, you know, when we got our scale outback, when you do give a two percent increase to the higher management, it's not as much lower, and it, and it does, it, it gets all outskewed. But I think one of the things here, too, is on the, the battalion chiefs and the fire marshals, is that this is retroactive to January the second. Their two-point-five is not January, retroactive for, to January the second. So I didn't know if there was some way to form an amendment into this, or would that go into the two-point-five, or?
I, I would prefer to just leave it alone, and we'll address it in the next thirty days. Uh, it's a little bit too complicated, come in here with an hour's notice and, and try to change everything we've been working on for years, nine months. And I just, I'll pledge to you that I'll sit down with these guys and, and, uh, we'll, we'll see if we're being unfair on what we pay them and, and what their benefits are, and then we'll bring it back, and at that point in time, if we wanna make it retroactive back to January first, we can.
Okay, that's why I, that's why I know, but we can go back.
Let's get this business that we've been working on so long finalized, so. All right, we got a motion, uh, we have amendment. Mr. Height, do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, say a, no, I'm sorry, call Rose, Miss Whibley.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to approve as amended?
Remove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to approve as amended?
Remove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Hold on a minute, uh, Miss Whibley. Uh, Nathan might wanna make a note back there in the back. These push buttons aren't working really well, so we might wanna tweak them a little bit. Go ahead. Mr. Height. Are we supposed to leave these on? No.
No.
Okay.
R-1997, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution approving salary increases for elected officials and city council members of the City of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to approve as amended?
Remove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to approve as amended?
Remove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to approve as amended?
Remove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt as amended, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to approve as amended?
Remove.
Okay. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to approve as amended?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Move for adoption as amended?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to approve as amended?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ginn.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt. Give me a second.
Second.
Questions, comments? On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
No.
White.
No.
Robinson.
No.
Baxter.
No.
Harris.
No.
Ginn.
No.
Height.
No.
Um, I have a, an unusual question on this one. This one has been pending, getting a business license, so we've already issued a citation for operating a business without a license. I guess I need to know, is planning going to tell them this failed and they need to move their cars, or?
I would say yes.
All right, oh, nineteen sixty-six, Councilmember Taylor.
We'll hold that.
Okay. Oh, nineteen sixty-seven, Councilmember Harris.
I please read and hold.
An ordinance reclassifying property located at Windsong Drive in the City of North Little Rock from R-two to C-three and to the Green Belt zoning classification by amending ordinance seventy-six ninety-seven in the City of North Little Rock, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, first reading.
Okay, he's gonna hold that. The, uh, all you guys out there that, from that Windsong neighborhood, I love that neighborhood. Matter of fact, I tried to build a house out there at one point in time in my life. Uh, get with your city council members, talk to them about the pros and cons, and, and let them know just how you feel. Let them tell you what, what their thinking is, and, uh, do it professionally, and, uh, you got two great ones right here, I'm telling you. So spend some time with them, and they're, they're willing to spend time with you. Okay? All right, next.
Oh, nineteen sixty-eight, Councilmember Taylor.
We're gonna hold that.
Okay. Oh, nineteen sixty-nine, Mayor Smith.
Let's call it.
An ordinance supplementing and, and amending ordinance number eighty-eight sixty-nine, consenting to parity indebtedness, prescribing other matters relating thereto, first reading.
All right, let me try to give you an executive summary on this. If y'all remember back, uh, a number of years ago, we did our only TIF district in our entire city, and it will continue to be the only di, this TIF district, we can't create anymore. Uh, so, uh, it was very successful. We put that, uh, Rockwater Boulevard in, and there's been millions and millions of dollars, uh, down there, uh, in, in homes and apartments, and list goes on and on. So what we're wanting to do now is go into phase two, uh, and go across the street, and there's another sixty lots over there. Um, and so in this legislation, when we created this TIF district, it, it said on there that we couldn't add to it. So what we're asking you to do right now is lift that, uh, requirement, uh, so that we can add to it, and what we will do is come back in two weeks with another legislation that will expand this debt to create the infrastructure to support that, uh, additional, uh, neighborhood. Uh, all of it, we've had it, all the properties appraised, we've anticipated what the, the do, uh, the indebtedness will be, and what the revenue's gonna be off the tax income, and, uh, it will pay for itself. So, uh, yeah. Yeah, wait, the best thing, and we've got Leanne here from Stevens, uh, it looks like the first two years, uh, it will pay interest only, you know, and then once the, the rest of the houses get built out. But starting out, day one, it'll pay interest only. In the third year, it'll start paying interest and principal. At three-and-a-half percent, Karen?
Sorry, Mayor. Um, so the original debt, you all remember the electric department loaned that money to us for that. The current rate is two-point-two-five percent. The rate will increase on the existing debt to three-point-two-five, and the new interest, the interest rate on the new debt is projected at five-point, five-point-two-five.
Okay. And, and we're strongly considering buying it ourselves.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So we're gonna take some excess funds from the electric company and invest it at five-and-a-half, where we've been getting two-and-a-half. So it's a, it's a win-win for us. Ms. Ross? Bless you.
So what is the amount of the new bond that they are wanting?
Uh, the total debt service, eight, eight-fifty, slightly less than eight-hundred thousand in project funds.
Okay. Cause the, the original was one million.
One-point-three.
So they won't roll them both together? They will be two separate?
Correct.
Okay.
But, uh, the length of the indebtedness will not increase. Both issues will pay out in twenty-thirty-one.
Okay, um, I think that's a pretty good executive summary. Uh, how about a motion? Ms. Ross?
So moved it up.
Give me a second, and I'll ask questions.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Can I have Ms. Farrell come up here?
Yeah. We put that Rockwater Boulevard in, and there's been millions and millions of dollars down there in homes and apartments, and list goes on and on. So what we're wanting to do now is go into Phase Two and go across the street, and there's another 60 lots over there. And so in this legislation, when we created this TIF district, it, it said on there that we couldn't add to it. So what we're asking you to do right now is lift that requirement so that we can add to it. And what we will do is come back in two weeks with another legislation that will expand this debt to create the infrastructure to support that additional neighborhood. All of it, we've had it, all the properties appraised, we've anticipated what the indebtedness will be, and what the revenue is going to be off the tax income, and it will pay for itself. So, yeah. Yeah, wait, the best thing, and we've got Leanne here from Stevens, it looks like the first two years, it will pay interest only, you know, and then once the rest of the houses get built out. But starting out, day one, it'll pay interest only. In the third year, it'll start paying interest in principal. At 3.5%? Karen?
Sorry, Mayor. So the original debt, you all remember the electric department loan that money to us for that. The current rate is 2.25%. The rate will increase on the existing debt to 3.25, and the new interest, the interest rate on the new debt is projected at 5.25.
Okay. And, and we're strongly considering buying it ourselves.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we're going to take some excess funds from the electric company and invest it at 5.5 where we've been getting 2.5. So it's a, it's a win-win for us. Ms. Ross?
So what is the amount of the new bond that they are wanting?
The total debt service, 850,000? Slightly less than 800,000 in project funds.
Okay, because the, the original was 1 million?
1.3.
So they won't roll them both together? They will be two separate?
Correct.
Okay.
But the length of the indebtedness will not increase. Both issues will pay out in 2031.
Okay, I think that's a pretty good executive summary. How about a motion?
Send it.
Give me a second, then we'll ask questions.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Can I have Ms. Farrell come up here? Because, you know, I, I had lots of questions, and I think it'd be pretty informative.
Lisa, can you come up? Jim?
Because the one thing we always want to do, we don't want to take money away from the school district, and so if she can explain how.
Okay, state, state your question, Debbie.
Explain as far as the school district, you know, funds, you know. I know before any development, they were practically receiving no funds based on the tax down there. And then now, there is a limit on what can be used in the TIF.
That, that's correct. TIF funds can only be used for public infrastructure, sewer, road, water, so that's very defined in legislation. Also, the legislature carved out school districts, libraries, county hospitals, police, and firemen pension funds. So when the property tax increases in year three, those entities will start receiving the property tax that they would receive right away. So I don't know the current property tax on the parcel, but for purpose of example, let's just say it's $5,000. And so the county and all entities continues to get the 5,000. And then if the amount, again, I'm just using an example, the amount of property tax grows to $20,000, then out of that 15,000 in increased value, the schools get it right away, the pension, police and fire pension, libraries, and county hospitals immediately start getting part of that 15,000. And then there's a portion that is left to pay back TIF. And all of the numbers are run recognizing the amount of millage that is allowed for the repayment of TIF bonds. So it's a fast win for schools and others because the increase in value goes to them immediately.
And this is what I finally had to wrap my hand around is, is basically, they would not be receiving anything if this is not done, correct?
That, that's correct. I mean, the parcel pays some amount of property tax, but not, not near what it could with about a 15 million increase in property value.
Yeah, it's, it's a huge uplift for the school district.
Yeah. And to date, Rockwater has brought in over 50 million in increased property tax value.
Yeah, but you've done a great job.
Thank you, and that's thanks to the leadership of the city.
Okay, where are we? Yeah, that's, that's White.
This newest phase of Rockwater, what, what is this going to be?
It'll be 43 single-family residences, and what other additional information can I give you?
Price range.
Our thought is that the price range will be in the 325,000 to 375,000 range. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, where are we, Ms. Whibley?
It's been read one time, and there's a motion and a second to suspend.
Got a motion to suspend all readings?
To suspend all.
Do I have a second? Got a motion to suspend all readings? On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Now we need to go back to.
Yeah, Sean, did you answer that gentleman's questions about the parking lot?
Yes, he, he was just wanting information, so he's fine with what's going on, and he was more concerned about where Wyatt was being built, and we showed him the, the two buildings being currently built, and he was happy.
Okay, let's call 64 then.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a parking lot in a C-6 zone and decorative fencing along the property line for certain real property located along Bishop Lindsey Avenue and North Magnolia Street in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
Send it.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Concludes all business.
Thank you very much. Just FYI update, we did a topping out ceremony this afternoon on the 600 Main Building. They're anticipating that it could very well be finished by November. First Ryan Building, we did the topping out on it about two weeks ago, three, and they're